It's called order this the Monday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting of Ellisville Town Council. So, sorry guys. Chief, if you want to say the pledge?
Sure will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Jimmy, do you want the prayer?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I hear my father, we come before you this evening and as always, we thank you so much, this little town that we serve. We thank you for all the many blessings you bestowed on this town, its families represented here and the families represented by employees of the Ellisville PD, Ellisville, the town of Ellisville. Please be with us tonight, lead the guide our conversation, our thoughts, clear our minds that we can conduct business that was pleased the last thing, deep thing, amen.
Sandy, roll call.
Scott Oldham.
Yeah, here.
Pamela Samples.
Here.
William Ellis.
Here.
Trevor Sager. Dan Swafford.
Here.
Through the minutes for the regular meeting, November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Uh, abstain, I wasn't present.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Action pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll.
So moved.
Second.
Motion several seconds, when you're ready, Sandy.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
First on the agenda tonight is a resolution, resolution twenty-two dash twenty twenty-one to dispose of surplus property for the Department of Public Works.
Pip, you gonna do this?
Uh, it doesn't matter to me, whatever you want to do.
Oh, uh, well, you've been using a truck, I'll just let you have it.
Uh, I'm not too prepared for it, so forgive me. Uh, we recently did some repositioning of trucks within the DPW. Uh, so we took one of the trucks from the utilities division and we're using it for the street division as a service vehicle. So we were using a nineteen ninety-eight, I believe it was, F four fifty truck with the service body on it. And so now we don't need that no more and we're gonna surplus it and try to sell it at auction.
Thank you.
Is this auction via eBay or are we doing some individual or what?
Well, I, I called, uh, one auction company in Bloomington. And they told me they would be, uh, forgive me, I don't, I'm not sure how much the exact amount was now percentage to sell it, but they could sell it online for us. Also, uh, there's another agency here in Monroe County, Monroe County Highway, they've been using this govdeals.com and they say that they do really, really good selling stuff through the, the govdeals.com. So I would like to sell it at auction if we can.
Counsel questions?
I would like to ask Darla if I need, if we need to amend the resolution. I use the normal language about eBay, an internet auction site, which has been approved by the Indiana Office of Technology or by Silbid. So do we need to change that language if we use a different internet bidding site?
It wouldn't hurt to do that, just to keep the record clear as to what the, what happened to the piece of equipment.
Pip, could you tell me again the name of that website?
It's govdeals.com.
Okay.
Again, questions from counsel? Or motions from counsel?
I'll make a motion. Are you going to, Dan?
No, go ahead.
Make a motion to accept resolution twenty-two dash twenty twenty-one to dispose of surplus property for the Department of Public Works.
As amended.
As amended.
I second it.
Motion second, Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tonight, there are three ordinances on first reading. The first is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty regarding the nineteen seventy-seven police and fire pension and disability fund.
I will address this. Um, as you will recall, the council at its last meeting approved a resolution by which the town agreed to, um, become a part of what we're going to call in shorthand, the nineteen seventy-seven fund. And the board of directors at INPRS have already approved the resolution. So there's nothing else that the town council needs to do to be part of the fund, according to Debbie at that organization. Scott had asked me to draft an ordinance, so I came up with one and I'll be the first to admit, I don't like it. So, uh, some amendments are probably going to have to be necessary, but I just wanted to tell everybody what I found out and maybe clarify at least some issues and it does, according to the statute, this does apply to all full-time personnel. So we have to make a distinction between current fire and police personnel and future. So current fire and police personnel still have to pass the medical examination that's required of everybody, but the age requirement doesn't have to be met. So if you're a part of the town's fire or police department, obviously you're, and if you've been in perf, you don't have to worry about your age requirement, but you do have to pass the medical. So all future employees after January tenth of twenty twenty-two have to meet both requirements, the age requirement and the medical requirement. And Debbie did confirm that if a police officer or firefighter, for whatever reason, doesn't pass that medical, the town can still hire that person, but they would automatically still be part of perf. I was asked some questions like, well, what happens if, for example, someone leaves another organization and say they're out for a couple of years and then they want to come to Ellisville? As I understand the statute, if they were part of the nineteen seventy-seven fund in their prior employment, the town can go ahead and hire them, but the town has to make up that employee's contributions for however long they were out. And then if you look at the statutes, the legislature attempted to come up, I think with about every other employment question, they came up with every iteration you could maybe think of. But, um, I guess my question to the council is, what do you want me to do with this ordinance? And do we really need to have an ordinance in this case? If the purpose of the ordinance is just to keep the employees informed in a shorthand version as to what the requirements are, there may be another way to do that, maybe that's better than just doing an ordinance. Because obviously the Indiana code is going to control or the rules up in Indianapolis at the retirement fund are going to control. So I guess my question is, uh, what's the council's pleasure and what are you looking for, for this ordinance to say?
Counsel comments?
Um, clarification, you, you said if we hire a person that has been off of the, off of this for several years, we have to make up their con, or the their part of, like the employee's contribution or the part of the town would have been contribution. And we have to pay all that up before we can hire this person or let this person get on this pension?
I'm trying to find the code section. I'm looking at thirty-six dash eight dash eight dash seven, uh, which discusses the membership requirements for being in the fund. So subsection B says a police officer or firefighter with service before May first nineteen seventy-seven, not that that's old, but how many, you know, are you gonna have a lot of those? Who is hired or rehired after April thirtieth nineteen seventy-seven may receive credit under this chapter for service as a police officer firefighter prior to entry into the nineteen seventy-seven fund if the employer who rehires the police officer firefighter chooses to contribute to the nineteen seventy-seven fund the amount necessary to amortize the police officers or firefighters' private, prior service liability. That's all I can tell you, so.
Okay, I'm gonna sound stupid here, but.
You can't sound stupid on this, I mean, no way.
I don't, I don't understand that.
Well, I'm not saying I do either, William. So that was my point. Um, I tried to go through the statutes and, um, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that I understand all of this, so.
Um, if I could interject and Mike Corman may want to, um, correct me. When we first started looking at this fund, they do a one-time amortization for the town and they looked at all of our existing employees and how much it would cost for the existing employees to join the seventy-seven fund. And it was cost prohibitive for, for that. There was a portion the town had to pay and a portion the employee had to pay because the employee's portion is the six percent and the town's is seventeen point two right now. So I do think that if you hire a person that has been absent from the fund, that you want to put in that fund, you would have to pay as if they had been employed or in the fund for those few years. And since we are agreeing to pay the six percent, that might mean that we would be liable for both amounts. What do you think, Mike Corman?
I understand from my conversation with Debbie, uh, uh, in purse, that for the crossover that we're doing now for the handful of people, uh, that is all correct. Then afterwards, uh, the people, um, would have to, uh, meet the requirements, uh, you know, as a condition of employment. We say we're gonna hire them, we like them, as long as they have the age requirements and they can pass, uh, uh, the physical and mental evaluations, then they're, they're hired. So uh, and the rest of it, that is correct, that, uh, we would have to pick up everything to cross everybody over. It was cost prohibitive, that's why it wasn't offered to everybody. So, uh, well, I can bring back up, it was offered, but everybody said no, except for the handful of new people, so.
But the, but it's a little confusing if we try to hire somebody that was active in another department and then they were away from that department for a year or two before we hired them. It reads like we would have to pay that difference. Do you agree with that, Mike?
Yes, I do. The fact is, it doesn't happen that often. When somebody is leaving, uh, one position to another in the same fund, most of the time they've already retired from that other agency. And, you know, an example, they've already retired from the seventy-seven fund and now they're looking to, you know, come to another organization, especially at a higher echelon type positions. Uh, so I, I'm not familiar with anybody in the agency that has had to pick up, you know, usually it's continual service, transfer from one agency to another with no loss of time. There's no money to be had, you know, changed. But since we, uh, yeah, I'm not familiar with any other situation where somebody has, uh, left the fund for a couple of years and came back, I don't know the answer to that.
That's my understanding of the statute and I, you know, all smart aleck comments aside, that's what I was intending to say because I think if you're gonna have people moving around, it's usually going to be the younger police officers and firefighters. I'm, I'm not going to say never, but how many uh, police and firefighters are going to be moving around from facility, I mean, from, uh, department to department after they've got fifty years in? So, and obviously if they were hired before May of nineteen seventy-seven, they're not going to meet the age requirement, uh, they can't. So they just, they need to meet the physical. But I interpret that to mean the town has to make up their contributions.
And if I could just clarify one more thing. I think that Scott, the reason you wanted this ordinance was to guarantee that people we hire in police and fire now would be on the seventy-seven fund. And that is the requirement. If we, any new hires would automatically have to do the baseline application and pass the medical exam to go on to the seventy-seven fund. But because we still have the perf and police and fire are part of that perf and we still have active participants in that, the municipal perf, then that option would be there for them to join it, the regular perf. But it's very unlikely that they, um, the lady from perf said she'd been with perf for thirteen years and she only knew of one person that didn't pass the physical and the, um, baseline application. So that's pretty slim chance.
For the people who are already here?
No, this is just for new hires.
No, that's not true. There are people who fail that all the time. They, they truly do not pass the physical all the time, uh, so it's not a rare event.
Okay, sorry.
No, no, it's, you can only go on what you're told. Um, and a lot of times it's small things that will catch somebody that they might, may not even know, you know, a physical abnormality or something wrong or perf. You almost have to look at it as insurance, where they won't take you on the insurance plan if you've got a bad knee or a bad back or something like that, or they write in some type of restriction where you can't retire because of damage to a knee or damage to an elbow or, or whatever they've pre-identified. The reason I asked for the ordinance is, is twofold. Because of what Sandy said, right now we have a dual plan. Essentially, I don't know what better way to say it, where you're gonna offer the seventy-seven perf or you're gonna offer the other. Well, here, here's the problem with that. Then you're gonna be in the other forever, at least in some version of it, and you're gonna have multiple retirement plans around there. There's also gonna be the temptation, and I hate to say it this way, but that's, that's what it's gonna be. The temptation that, well, I don't think this perfect can pass whatever the restriction is, let's hire him under the other fund. Well, that's not necessarily good business practice and that's not good public safety practice. The reason that the retirement fund has the, the mental, the physical requirements built into it is to assure both the fund, because it takes a direct financial impact when somebody retires early, and the public, that we have the, you know, people who are suitable to do the job there. If we keep maintaining both, that's an issue. Now, if we it's sort of like, well, if you can't be on the A team, you want to be on the B team, we're team number one or team number two. So we need to have a hiring standard that everybody, at least in my opinion, all new hires after a certain date have to be in the seventy-seven plan, period. Because it makes it easier for the town to manage and ultimately the state to manage. That being said, it's also kind of, for want of a better word, at a detriment to the town. Because there are a lot of, you know, I can, I can't speak for fire, I'll, it might do that, a lot of police officers who will run twenty, twenty-five, thirty years in a certain agency and then they want to retire from the seventy-seven plan and go to a smaller agency where they can still do police work, but maybe not at the volume of calls that they were running in Evansville or Fort Wayne or wherever else. If we don't offer a secondary or tertiary option for them to retire, I'm not sure you can move, retire from, say, Evansville and come to Ellisville, still draw your retirement while you're working for a seventy-seven plan agency. I don't think you can do that. I think you can continue in the seventy-seven plan and continue to accrue retirement points, so you get a bigger percentage, because that's, your percentage is based on years of service. But I'm not sure you can retire it again, like say Evansville or Bloomington or Terre Haute, and then come over to Ellisville and continue your career while still drawing a retirement from another seventy-seven agency.
You can't join the seventy-seven plan again, but you can retire on the seventy-seven plan and go to another agency if they have municipal perf and join that. And if you're vested, you can draw, draw both retirements.
Right, right. But then we have that dual system once again, where we're picking and choosing. And I can envision at a certain point that we have someone in, in, let's, I, I'll just put it out there because it's theoretical. We send someone for their evaluation, it comes back where the mental health specialist says, this is not a good fit for the seventy-seven plan, we're not gonna allow them in. But yet at some point, there's the temptation there, well, I can fit in the other perf, you should hire me under that.
Yes, and that is, are, and, and it's a, a bad situation. We can't, we can't eliminate the police and fire off of our existing perf. That would be the other option, because then we would be liable for their retirements.
No, but you can say anyone hired after a certain date, that's why I wanted the ordinance, anyone hired after a certain date must be in the nineteen seventy-seven plan. Because what we're gonna get into is if you have the dual plans, say somebody fails the mental or physical, and then we just say, I'm sorry, we, we can't employ you. Because we will by that point in time have already offered them a job. You must offer a job before you send them to this. Now, of course, it's provisional on meeting the requirements of the seventy-seven plan. But if you offer two plans, one without the mental, one without the physical, and the other with the mental and physical, and they say they go for seventy-seven and fail, Darla, help me out here, if we don't have a hard and fast rule that says you gotta be in the seventy-seven plan, we've already extended an offer of employment, because you have to before they can even take the mental or physical. Now we're still looking for employing this person because we have a secondary retirement option for them.
Well, I agree, we need to make it clear one way or the other. So, so all you want then is just the ordinance to simply state anyone hired after January tenth, twenty twenty-two must be in the nineteen seventy-seven fund, period.
Except, make the exceptions that are within state law, that allows the top two within the agency, whether it be police or fire, to be exempted for that, because it does allow you to bring executives from outside the agency into the agency. Again, for new ideas, new blood, et cetera, et cetera, as opposed to you don't hire a one-year officer and bring them to the top of the agency. You, you would look for that twenty-five, thirty, forty-year veteran and bring them in as the chief or deputy chief, again, for the continuity and control portion.
Darla, I do think you should leave in the part, part that says the town will pay their six percent. I think it's good to have that guideline in writing. Okay.
Further counsel discussion, questions? Marshall, chief, town manager, anyone?
I'm good. I agree with your, your statements that that needs to be clear. Uh, and I hope we don't do anything to slow this down and I like that the, the date matches up with our own ordinance, our, our resolution, uh, with, uh, the seventy-seven fund. So, uh, looking forward to something, uh, solid. Thank you.
I agree. Uh, it's very confusing. I've tried to, I've had several questions that, uh, Mike has answered and Sandy, so, yeah, we're good with it right now, so.
And I think it is finalized, we've gotten our, our acceptance from perf, we are in the plan. So it's just a matter of getting the, um, baseline applications and physical submitted and then we'll start the deductions.
And I will say, being in the seventy-seven plan already, you almost have a, have to have a play bill every year to even follow it, because it changes sometimes almost yearly by the whims of the legislature. So just, everybody needs to be prepared that that fund is not a historical fund, it is a living fund and they make changes to it on a regular basis. So anyone else? Okay, Darla, are you good with what we've got and do whatever revisions?
I think so, yes.
Move on to ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one to amend the hook-on fee policy.
What I have put together is a proposed ordinance to, um, change the requirements for when owners of property can get a hook-on fee. And what I came up with was an ordinance that states that the owner of a piece of property cannot buy a hook-on fee for that property until the building permit is secured and the foundation is poured. And the reason for that is to, um, make it clear that developers can't buy hook-on fees in bulk and then not build. So for years or months or for years. So the, the purpose of that amendment is just to make it clear that if you're an owner of the property or you're a developer, you can't, um, pay for a hook-on fee and get a hook-on commitment, I guess, until you've obtained the building permit and you've laid the foundation for the, whatever it is you're going to build.
Okay, counsel comments or questions? Me or Mike or Jeff Farm or anyone? Seeing none, that will come back to us as we're reading next one, next time around. So anyone in the public who has questions that time, that'd be your opportunity to raise them. Next is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two, fixing the salaries for budget year twenty twenty-two.
And Amber and I prepared the budget ordinance, uh, reflecting the, um, one thousand forty dollars or fifty cents an hour raise for each employee as suggested in the budget.
And, um, do we, do we do the budget and then ask for the amendment or how, how do we proceed with that, Sandy?
Yes, it's presented and if you want to amend it, it would be good to do it now.
Okay, well, um, I, I short-noticed everyone, unfortunately. To amend the ordinance, uh, fixing of salaries for the budget year twenty twenty-two to include an amendment in the planning department to, uh, the wages of the assistant planner and the building inspector. A few months ago, we lost our MS four operator. I've been looking for someone to take over those duties and we was trying to decide which employee and what employees we had where we could incorporate it with the existing employees' duties. We had an MS four operator, he worked part-time on a weekly basis for half a day. And he retired and we had five thousand dollars out of stormwater to pay him. The person we had, uh, was a fine employee and, um, as far as when he worked, it worked well, but the fact that rain events and work schedules and developments or events that occurred because of developing properties, um, one day a week, the schedule was never when we actually needed the MS four operator. It's a part-time job, to be sure, currently. And, um, we needed the flexibility that incorporating that job with one of our employees that were there forty hours a week seemed to be the answer. With that said, um, we hired a new building inspector this year and Ronnie's doing a fine job and as, um, as we, uh, found out that, um, the MS four, um, position or designation, if you will, as an operator, uh, to, um, to, uh, make sure that we matched what IDM required of us. Ronnie, in the building inspector, uh, was the perfect fit. And so, um, due to that, um, I asked the planning director to come up with a plan that would allow us to utilize, uh, the stormwater money to increase the pay of, of two employees, uh, in the planning and it would help what's, I, I'm lost. what's, I, I'm lost, lost my train of thought, but it would help us establish the MS four operator within the confines of the staffing for the planning department. So I set the plan to you, and the basic plan is to change the assistant planners wage this year from twenty, or for next year from twenty-four dollars per hour to twenty-five seventy-three, and the building inspectors pay from twenty-five dollars to twenty-five sixty-seven per hour. And that basically, the, the short story is, the increase is that assistant planner from a salary of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars to fifty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars. It's an increase of thirty-six hundred dollars, and the building inspector from fifty-two thousand to fifty-three thousand four hundred, which is an increase of fourteen hundred dollars. We took some of the store money to pay for the building inspectors' current wages, and the rest went to the assistant planner, and I could go into the long story, but I sent you the, the email, and I've talked to several of the board members, and so I just opened that up for discussion now.
Okay, questions or discussion from council?
So, and I'm sorry, Mike, I didn't get a chance to talk to you today, but so the reason we're increasing these two positions is because we do not have an MS four operator. Is that correct, or?
Well, we did not. Ronnie has passed his MS four operator certification, so he currently now is acting as the MS four operator. And I was doing some of the field inspections, but I am not an MS four operator. And we asked Rick Poppy to come over on some of the more serious inspections that we had. And so we do have one now, but no, we did not have one. And we looked at several employees to fill that spot, and truly Ronnie's, Ronnie is the person that best suits what we need to complete the task.
So he will be the new MS four operator, correct?
That's correct, that, that's correct, and, and in the, in the structure of the planning, we have a planning director, assistant planning director, and now we have a full-time building inspector slash MS four operator. And, and if, you know, if we were doing the work in four hours a week, but some weeks when it's dry, there's hardly anything to do, and during the wet season, they may spend a whole day working it, or several hours of several days working it, and, and that, that will be the duties of the MS four operator, is to make sure that all the developments and any work in town complies with all the stormwater rules as set forth by the IDAM.
And so going on into the future, I mean, as long as we still keep this one employee, there won't be a need for another MS four operator, correct?
That is correct, and we probably didn't satisfy my intentions for the MS four operator. And so we did what we could with the money we had at hand. It has zero impact on the budget for next year, it, it's a push as far as how the money's dispersed. And, yeah, I mean, yeah, we intend for the building inspector to be the MS four operator, and we hope to keep Ronnie until he retires. And so as, as fast as things are moving and planning now, with all the development in town and what we predict for the future, it's possible we'll need an additional part-time building inspector or more staffing as we become busier. I mean, our entire staff for the town of Ellisville is at best holding their own, but as the town grows, as I told one of the board members today, we truly are going through some growing pains, and, and so workload and who we'll have in the future, I, I, I won't, I didn't want to mislead you and think, well, now that we have an MS four operator incorporated into the building inspector's position, that I may not come back and say, well, we need more help in the future, if that was what you was asking. But currently, we think this'll, this'll take care of us for the near future.
Yeah, I, I'm just concerned that we're using money we have earmarked for something else that maybe next year we're going to need back is.
No, that is not, no, this, no, that's not, that's not what's happening at all.
Okay. And then the other thirty-six hundred dollar increase, and that, that's due to what? Now, you have to clarify that with me.
Well, to be blunt, we have a staff that had we increased the MS four operators' wages to the point we think it should be in the future, even if we just give them the raise that we asked for now, they would be making more than the assistant planning director. And it just, it, it's in most any situation that I'm aware of, it does not seem appropriate when we have levels of classifications or what have you, that, that we would want to do that. The planning director, I could, he can speak for himself, but he has intentions of next year suggesting that the assistant planning director have another increase that would put her on even keel with the street and utilities second in commands, and more in line with what the planning, the police and fire department, not as much money, but more in line with all of our second-in-commands in the staff in the staffing of the town, so. So this is just part of a two-part series of where we'll be coming back for suggestions from planning of increasing both of their pay again next year, but we had this amount of money now to work with. This seems like the best plan and the most appropriate in, in my view, as well as the suggestion from the planning director. And so we want to do this now, the money's available, and it seems appropriate considering the workload of both positions, and, and especially with the increase in duties with Ronnie, Ronnie's billing inspector job, so that's still kind of long and short of it.
Okay, I just would like to caution you, and something for you to think about is the rate study, the, the wage study that we had done two years ago that we don't get out of line with what that study recommended. I mean, I'm all, I understand the increase in duties, but I, what we've done for years and is kind of catch up and, and clarify if I'm misunderstanding you on this. We, we've always played that catch-up to this person because they made so much, blah, blah, blah. And that's why we did this wage study. And I just want to caution you that we're not getting out of line with that.
Oh, and I appreciate the caution, and I respect the wage study. I'll be real truthful in saying, I didn't think it was a good idea to do the wage study, and I was wrong. It was a good idea, and it brought to our attention a third, a, a, an outside view of what we do, and it, and it was done with professionals doing the work. And I, I think it was a terrific idea, and, and it changed the wages of a lot of our employees, and so it was very helpful. But I do not think that they got everything a hundred percent correct. And considering that I understand and appreciate the wage study and the fact that I am involved day-to-day with the staffing of the town, I think they missed the fact that our assistant planner was in the same position as several other of our assistants. And it really came to light the responsibilities and the duties and the importance of the job, and, and it's par with the rest of those positions. And in fact, with the development of the town, and as it is, you know, the planning department has went from, few years ago, it was considered a junior department to it's the tip of the spear of what we are doing in Ellisville currently as we grow. So the importance has been magnified by the events and the time, the ti, the time we're living in, and so I think they got that completely wrong. And there's nothing wrong with one event being taken care of and it triggering, taking care of two events. I mean, it's killing two birds with one stone, as far as I'm concerned, and it's not, I, I like it when everything goes perfectly, and from year to year, there's no added features to a budget or nothing last minute put in, and it gets a little sloppy when you do it. I feel like this is a little sloppy, but it's appropriate. And, and for me, I have no problem going through this to get this taken care of, because it's just something that they kind of left out. And then MS four, we used to have a part-time person, now we're going to give it to a full-time person. It makes the job better and more flexible, and it probably ensures that we'll have an MS four operator going forward. So like I said, this is killing two birds with one stone, and I'm sorry, I threw it, threw it on the board at the last minute, but it's better than not getting it done.
Correct, and, you know, we have a couple more weeks, but one thing I definitely want you to look at is increased duties of the assistant planning, because I do not like the words, because this person makes this amount, we got to make this person. That's what we have to get away from, because this could trigger another event. I mean, this could trigger something like, and this is just blown out of text here, but the police could come to it, or fire could come to us and say, okay, my assistant's not making this, so I want to make her or him make the same amount as this assistant make. That's what we've tried to get away from, doing the wage.
And I understand that, and I'm very careful of that, and we looked, we looked at it for a long time, and it's, it's that very reason that Ronnie turned out to be the perfect person for this job, because we looked at other job classifications that might have been able to incorporate this job into their duties, and it would have triggered those very events. And so this is the least worst good idea, if that makes sense.
And, and, and I have no problem with the MS four operator completely, that's, you, you have to be certified for that, I understand that. That is an additional duties assigned, that's, I have no problem with that part of it. So it's the other one that, you know, we've, we've got to make sure that we can justify giving the extra money, if that makes sense to you.
If I can. If I'm going on a trip and I got a flat tire I need to fix, and then at the last minute, I decide I need a lot of gas to get to where I'm going, you know, I, I'm sorry, but like I said, it's a little sloppy, and I, and I really don't like this procedure, but it actually is a positive for the town. It's a positive for the staff, and it, and, and it does not belittle what other departments or any classifications might, I mean, it doesn't belittle anyone else to handle this. And, and I, I really believe that we cut, the, the wage study really missed the boat with the assistant planner. And so this, that's a spin-off of what the MS four position, you know, i- it's a spin-off that, but I asked Kevin to make this work, and this, this works, this, this is what works. And unless anybody disagrees with what I said, I, I don't even mind if I get chastised after the fact for how seemingly sloppy of a procedure this is, I still think it's the right thing to do.
I'd like to add something if I could.
Sure, go ahead.
On the job descriptions, every employee in the town of Ellisville, every full-time employee, filled out a questionnaire and filled out their own job duties. So I agree, things with the MS four operator has changed, but I just want to, to say, he keeps saying that they missed the boat on the assistant planner. They did exactly what the assistant planner told them to do, what she was doing. She wrote her own job description, everyone did. The supervisors then approved those job descriptions. So I just wanted to throw that in.
Sandy, and that's true, but I've been working on revising that job description for the past year, because that was done before the building department came in, and it has taken over so much of our time. And Denise does so much work with the building department, and she's done a great job with that, that the job description that was for our department that was appropriate two years ago really is losing relevance at this point.
Well, Kevin, if, if you would, and that's the point I wanted to interject here. First off, and forgive me, Dan, this seems pointed, you know, I really don't mean it to be, it's not fair to ask Mike to pay attention to something, that's, that's our job, to pay attention to what we've set in motion. He's just to recommend, so it should be us paying attention to standards that we've set. I was not a big believer in the, in the job evaluation. I still remain unimpressed with the job evaluation for a variety of different reasons, amongst which is quite frankly, the job evaluation is now three years old, the economy is significantly different than it was then. The pressure to hire and find good quality people, I don't want to say didn't exist then, but it wasn't at the degree that it is now. There is currently a bidding war going on in a variety of different professions that quite frankly is, is boggling my mind. I, I, I never thought we'd see some of the increases across the board in different professions that we're seeing, and still people not taking the job. With that said, I, I, the one thing I want to interject here is, whatever we do or don't do, I, I do want, and again, in all fairness, I, I want this whole argument or this whole discussion every year to stop. Let's find something, because that is not fair to this employee, because every year it comes down to, it seems there's a discussion revolves around one employee, and that's got to stop. So whatever we need to do now to, to elevate this person or to come to an understanding that this is where that person needs to be, and we move forward from there. But for the last three or four years, every year, it's been the conversation about this one specific employee out of all of our employees, and that's just not fair to them, to, to have, to be singled out. So if we need to go higher, we need to go even higher to make sure we're getting what we're paying for, because Danny may bring up a very good point, it's the duties that should, should make a difference. And Kevin, you bring up a good point, there's a lot more duties than there was before. And the point that I'm making, I think, is still valid, that there's competition out there for quality employees, and there's municipalities who are willing to pay hand over fist to get good quality employees, and we've got them, let's make sure we're keeping them. So I guess my request is, this discussion, this argument has to happen again this year. Please, let's get it to a level where we're not having this discussion yet again next year.
It is unfortunate that it's coming at this time of year, whenever we're right down to the wire, getting our budget, our salary ordinance set for our salaries next year. And it, it's just bad timing.
It's been bad timing for four years in a row, three years in a row.
Hey Scott.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I really think, like Mike said, that, you know, that they would probably be coming and changing her title. I think that that's something we definitely should look at, because I do think. I think that that's something we definitely should look at because I do think that's where that will help a lot. Her title gets changed, I don't think then there should be questions like when we do the races. I think it will help you.
That's quite possible, you know, and again, I can't deny that. At the point I'm just trying to make here, guys is. The, the salary study, the wage study, quite frankly, I don't think is worth much anymore. Because the world is completely different now than it was then. Again, it's Sandy helped me out three years old now from the data. And things have changed significantly since then. The town's perspective of growth and expectations of our department is significantly different. I mean, if you just bought a home in Ellisville three years ago. Go and look and see how much your house has increased in value in those three years. It's significant levels. So again, I just want to be mindful that this employee shouldn't be singled out every year for this. So whatever we're going to do this year, let's, let's end it. Let's get it to the point where we don't have to. Have one employee constantly be the subject of last minute angst at the end of the year.
Well, Scott, a couple more comments I need to make and then I'll be done with it. Your last comment you made about one employee being singled out. We are not as a council singing out singling out anyone. This is being brought to us. This is our job to ask questions and overlook this kind of thing. So I will disagree with you on that. This is what we are paid to do. I'm sorry, what?
We aren't the ones signaling them out.
Exactly, and that's why I want to clarify what you were saying. Another thing Kevin, I think, has brought up the best out of all, everyone that's been said tonight. Her duties have changed or their duties have changed. And I'm very careful not to mention a single person's name. I, I mentioned the job. And that's what I was trying to get at. That if her job or if the job has changed, yes, we need to look at it. But if it's not changed. And we're just giving them money because someone else makes this money. That's what I'm concerned with. And another comment I'll make, and this will probably bring up a can of worms. And I just want to make it real quick. If our wage study you think is not where it should be, then maybe we should go back to them. Because they offered us, they would come back and look at it again every few years. I mean, that's what we do for rate studies. I mean, we do it for everything, so.
No, but but again, we're in non standard times.
Right, so maybe that's a good time to do it. I mean, because I'm no expert at it by no means.
I think exactly the opposite. I don't know that by the time you've got it done, that it remains valid now. I mean, go drive around at night, businesses that used to be open seven, eight, nine, 10 o'clock at night or later or not.
And that's due to a lot of reasons. And I agree, things have changed tremendously and maybe that's a good reason to do it. I don't know. I think for one reason, the, the study took so long to do in the first place was because of COVID. I think that's what drug it on for months, but.
No, before COVID is when we started it.
Right, but wasn't the studies being presented to us right at COVID or? Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
But the data was before COVID is what I'm trying to tell you.
I thought the data wasn't, and that's why it was taking so long. I'm sorry, what?
As I thought it was before and after, depending on when the supervisors and the people turn in their descriptions. Also on the wage study, other municipalities rely on theirs from WIS and other companies. I mean, they use that as a guide stone. Hearing all the comments. Really, we need to get, we need to stick the landing and figure out where this employee needs to be. And be done with it. Because if the job description is changed, we need to change the job description. Not pay more for the current description. Because if this employee leaves, then we just created a vacancy with a higher salary. That another employee may not be able to be capable of. And it's positions that are paying kind of like Dan said, not the employees. So. I think if we're going to do anything, we need to reevaluate how this employee is classified. I have no issue with MS four operator getting more money, that's another certification. And, you know, it's, they, they've got another certification. That's kind of another, a clear defined thing. And I don't know if they were even part of the wage study before. I would be, I'd be no, I would support another wage study. But I don't know if the timeline for this. Would be. Acceptable, but I know the county uses them, I know other municipalities use them, rely on them. So I think. Some of the things are built in, but I'm like Scott. It's getting frustrating that every year I've been on the council, this position has come up. And we needed more money because the jobs increased. Okay, you know, I think a lot of other jobs in the town can make the same case. And we can make the case that this is, you know, we've done this, have done that. We talked about making separate building and planning. I remember I specifically asked about the ongoing costs and none of this was mentioned. And that's a concern for me, that this should have been a heads up that, hey, our salaries are going to have to go through the roof. Because that's what's happened over the last, if you look at percentage of increase, it's been quite high over the last couple of years. I understand the case that it's just getting to be where it should be. But it's still a high percentage of increase and that's what people are seeing.
The only thing, the only thing I'll add is to respond to Dan. And to the general public is that there was a sufficient narrative. Produced by Kevin explaining most all of the actions that we were taking. And it wasn't about just making sure somebody was getting paid more than somebody else. Because we wanted an MS four operator. So I added narrative to that and sent it out. And I admit it was late getting out, but there was a narrative and it was pretty explanatory, so. It's all I could say.
I, I appreciate that. If I could just add real quick, kind of how this came to be in the first place. There is a hierarchy within our office in which. It goes from planning director to assistant director to the building inspector. And I fully believe that pay should be in line with those, with that hierarchy. Now, having said that, I was planning on addressing that discrepancy at the budget. Later this year. However, when the MS four coordinator position or the money for that came available. And I agree that that should go, that should provide some sort of extra benefit for. Our inspector, if he's going to do that also. I have a problem with adding to the discrepancy between the assistant director and the building inspector. That's kind of where, because I came up with this using money we already had. So it didn't affect the budget to try to make something out of it, to make it fair for both of them until we can get to budget time. So this is kind of how it came to be, so I apologize for that.
Okay, any further questions or comments? If not, we're going to move on and we'll see this again at our next meeting.
I, I would like to add that. What the suggestions have been made tonight are not incorporated in this salary ordinance. Because it just came to me today. So do we need to amend it now, Darla? Or can we amend it at the final reading?
Well, I was going to ask you, when you advertise the salary ordinance for the public hearing. Did you advertise the public hearing for tonight or for the next meeting?
I'm not required to advertise the salary ordinance. It's, it's not a requirement. Basically, the salaries are within the budgets, the budget required a hearing and, and they were all set. And I will add that Kevin did advocate for an increase at budget time. But that time. It was discussed that we would stick with the universal 50 cents per hour. So he did make an effort to try to do it at budget time.
Okay, well, considering there've been a lot of different comments, I think it would probably be. In everyone's best interest if there's an amendment to the ordinance now. So that everybody knows what's going to come back at the next meeting for sure.
I put together a little bit of a guideline. If you would like for me to read that into the minutes, so the council would have something to go on. Would that be good? Okay. To amend ordinance 21, 2021 dash 22, fixing the salaries for 2022. The planning section, assistant planner would change from $24 per hour to $25.73. The bi weekly from 192012 to 205858. The building inspector hourly rate would change, would go from $25 even to $25.67. The per hour and the bi weekly rate would go from 2000, 2053 dollars and 85 cents.
Okay.
The salary ordinance breaks it down by hour and bi weekly rather than annual.
Questions, comments?
I did one comment, and this is probably going to, is, is Mike has said, and I think Dana said, open up a can of worms. But considering our building inspector is the one that got the certification. Shouldn't they be getting majority of this?
Help me out, majority of what?
This, this money that's allocated for pay, the bigger raise.
There's $5,000 available in the stormwater for MS four operator. And the amendment would give $3,600 of that to the assistant planner and $1,400 to the building inspector.
So I'm thinking that's kind of backwards.
So do you have a counter proposal?
Flip it around.
Kevin, you on the way in?
The reason for those numbers is I was trying to fix the discrepancy in hierarchy in my office. In theory, the 5,000 would go to the MS four. And some of the money out of the building inspector line would shift up to assistant planner.
I get that, but still of the two, there's only one that actually has a, an added certification. And I'm, the hierarchy, that's kind of an interoffice thing. I mean, you can have him report directly to you if you need be. Instead of doing a hierarchy like that, there's just the three of you there, that's just a thought. But that's your office, but when it comes to the pay, I think that. He's got that certification.
I, I think there's more to this than just a certification. And I will not support anything what I've proposed now.
I guess I'll weigh in too. So when I talked to Kevin about this, and I even actually talked to Ronnie about this. One of the things that's not. Been said is Ronnie does have a certification. And as he moves forward and learns the ways of the building inspector. How it relates to the rest of planning. And what the importance of the MS four operator is to the town in general. How it serves satisfying items requirements. Those are. Learned experiences and that comes from repetitive operations. And as he moves forward. And in fact, in a year, it will be. He'll be twice as valuable just because of the experience of being an MS four operator. And learning from Rick Kopic, from street department and from planning and from tech reviews. And just working the job. He'll be even more valuable this coming year to put experience with the certification. And as I told Ronnie, I said, I will go back, back to bat for you to increase substantially. The increase that you get for being an MS four operator. There's no reason to beat around the bush. Kevin is trying to correct. Something that has to do with pay and. Structure of his department as well as take care of this MS four operator position. So it was a trigger and it allowed him to take advantage of it. We talked about how this would be received. And but I, I, I think his plan is as good as any plan. And to reverse what he's trying to do and how he's trying to go about it. And with the future in mind and our plans, true plans. Instead of having this MS four operator situation thrust on us when somebody retired. Seems like Kevin has the, probably the best idea that we could come up with. We maybe could have shifted a little muddy here and there. And, and we talked about doing it a different way. But this was his plan, I support it. But I also support whatever the board decides to do, so that's all I got to say about it.
Other thoughts, comments for the board? So what direction are we, we leaving here, guys? Because even I'm confused at this point.
Well, I'll be clear, I'll support what I recommended. Ron, getting the, the building inspector, getting the majority, switching the amounts around. I can't support the other one.
Okay.
Maybe. You know, because hearing that and hearing everyone else, I mean, maybe it would be better if we. Divided this and not hooked it as a group plan. Because I don't want to see someone who went through the certification not get his or their. Not saying reward, but their pay for doing something like that. Does that make sense?
There's another caveat to throw in, I'm sorry. But on the salary ordinance, it states at the end of every section that if you get a certification. It's worth $250 annually. So if you tie this to a certification. And then we're going against that guideline, I'm sorry, I don't mean to complicate it.
Well, but that being said, though, were we not already paying a consultant $5,000 a year to be, or the equivalent of $5,000 a year? To be our MS four operator while we have none on staff?
We, we used, we used to pay Rick Kopic as the town's engineer. We paid Bynum Fanyo Associates to do that job. And once they relinquished that job, they decided it was not a good idea anymore. Due to concerns with item, we, that's when we went to paying an employee to do it. But like I said, it was not the best idea. It was just the best we could come up with on short notice.
So what did we do last year? Didn't we not pay somebody $5,000? I mean, where did we get that?
Yeah, we, we paid them, we paid them $20 an hour. And I believe we were paying them four hours a week, is that right, Kevin?
Yeah, something like that, he worked more some weeks and less some weeks, but yeah, that's what it worked out to.
So that's where our $5,000 came with.
That's correct, and it came out of stormwater.
And what was that just for him doing MS four or was he doing other duties too?
That was all that he did.
Okay.
He started out as the, as the building inspector, but not for very long.
So when, when we look at this, guys, and again, I've heard, heard what everyone said, and I, I can agree with bits and pieces of everyone. Uh, you know, I think when we look at the totality of everything, I think one of the conversations I had with one of the council members earlier is if this, if this employee's pay is below what it should be given the duties. And we have freed up five thousand dollars by having an employee available to do it. I don't really see where using the money that would be set aside to pay an outside consultant, even if he was internal to this for doing the job, that, that's the rate of pay. But that being said, these are just additional duties now added to, to an employee who happens to have the certification, more to Sandy's point. So I, I guess in the long run, kind of using the money as Kevin has allotted with potentially some changes as others have talked about, I think is the best way to go about. Again, correcting two or three different errors with the same pot of money as opposed to having to dip in the general fund to once again, go back and recorrect or re-benefit someone to the level where they should be benefiting, if that makes any sense at all.
Mike Corman has his hand raised.
I just want to, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to add that, uh, the MS four operator, a part of being an MS four operator is having a certification. All, several uh, uh, titles in town, you must have certain certifications to have. So the two fifty, three fifty dollar is null and void. It's, the, the MS four operator has to have the certification. So uh, that's, uh, I think that comment is really, uh, not necessary. It's just a part of that job is you gotta be certified. So uh, I, I just want to point that out.
And I wasn't trying to downplay it at all. I'm just saying that that is on the salary ordinance. So I think it needs to be incorporated in his job rather than saying he's gotten a certification.
So that being said, Mike, do you want to, and Darla, if this is even allowed, reformulate the dispersal, if there's going to be a reformulation dispersal of this five thousand dollars amongst employees and bring it back to us next week and we will amend it. This one specific job role that night with whatever decision we can all come to as opposed to trying to craft some amendment right now that may be totally off base from what we wind up at.
I do need to add, we have to pass this salary ordinance at the next meeting. That's the last meeting of the year and I cannot continue making, doing payroll without it.
I get that, but we can also amend it at the last minute to rectify any dollars and cents as opposed to some structural amendment change. This is just a small change in distribution of funds.
Are you okay? The salary ordinance now, and then we do the amendment next meeting?
No, we have to, we have to have two meetings on this, and this is just the first reading, so I'm saying. Go on to next reading as if it were straight away and just amend as necessary next meeting. Since we're not dealing with a huge structural change to everyone's pay, it's literally two employees at that point. Are you good with that, Darla, or no?
I think that's fine.
So counsel, that would be my suggestion is that we move on into tonight's agenda, allow the town manager and the different employees, department heads to kind of go forward with what they need, with the justifications that they need and assault to consider this next week and run this as an amendment to the basic salary ordinance rather than weighing this down as a motion on first reading, trying to craft something that we'll just do an amendment to next week anyways. That agreeable?
It would be, but will we possibly see a different amendment or is it going to be identical to what was proposed tonight?
They'll have to propose, cause she's already put this forward, exactly what was there tonight, and then we can amend it from there. Okay, anyone object to that?
So to be clear, be clear, Scott, you're saying you're, you're wanting to add the amendment as proposed now and then change it later? Or you want to just go with no amendment and the straight budget? And then if we want to amend anything, it'll be the next meeting?
I think that's the way we have to go about it is the straight budget as it was proposed already and, and heard under the salary ordinance or, sorry, heard under the budget. And then fixing the salary ordinances, we can amend it next week or next meeting as appropriate.
Okay.
Darla, we can also amend the salary ordinance once we get into the new year, correct?
Yes, cities, cities cannot, but towns can. Sorry, Darla.
But that's why we have a range so that if you have a range, you can amend salary ordinances at that point. Cause you would budget for the top end of the range and if you're not paying it, you still have money left over.
Yes, that we budget for the top end of the range and then reduce that upper end by a thousand dollars.
Okay. So that's it.
And we didn't propose to break out of our budget.
Right, understood. So let's move on with tonight's meeting, because we have other things to, to deal with. Um, there are no ordinances on second reading. There is no old business. Is there a flood report, Mike?
There is. It's brief. Uh, uh, Christopher Burke is sending down Andrew Miller, who's been working on our plan. Uh, he is going to meet with planning, street department, uh, town engineers coming over and myself. And we are going to um, uh, hash out some of the last bits of the plan and so he can finish it. Uh, after it's finished, of course, they'll be permitting. And after permitting, then we can decide how to proceed as far as bidding the job or doing it in-house or whatever. Um, you know, it'll reflect whatever the plan demands. So I just wanted to let everyone know, uh, it's pretty exciting. We've been waiting for quite a long time. And um, with the ARPA money, which uh, we're going to talk about here in a minute when we schedule a work session. Uh, this is all falling into place and for once, um, timing and money may be on our side. That's all I got.
Okay. Move on now to the envisioned Ellisville update, Mr. Ray.
Yes, I'll also be very brief. Uh, we're having a steering committee meeting tomorrow at eleven o'clock at the town hall. And uh, this is to review the Taylor Group's um, information they shared with us last week. Leading to the vision statement. And also, we would like to join the council in January for a work session and discuss some of the outcomes of this envisioned Ellisville, and that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions, Barry, from the council?
I actually have a comment if I could. Um, Dan, I just, one thing that, uh, since you're with the chamber and have interactions with Main Street and all that. One thing I was wondering, other places have garlic festivals. I think we're the pizza capital of the country. I'm actually done some soft data on that and we have like, I believe it's one pizza place per thousand people, which is, I can't find any place higher than that. What would you and the other council members think about once a year having like a pizza festival?
Um, yeah, we're, we're about, we're about to get more pizza, I think.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
So, um, yeah, I'm, I'm.
We should capitalize on that.
I love festivals and I'll, uh, I'll be on board for any festival you want to have.
What's the other council member feel with that?
If you can arrange it, I think it's a fantastic idea, just. I don't know.
I might, I might even call it a supreme idea.
Or a deluxe, haha, yes. Yeah, it's, so do you, if I put out feelers for some groups to be able to do that, would anybody have any issues with that?
It could be, it could be, um, you know, Bloomington has taste of Bloomington. This could be taste of Ellisville.
I understand, it's focused around pizza. I mean, there's this little town in New York, can't remember the name of it. They have nothing to do with garlic and they have a garlic festival that draws thousands of people every year. And we have a lot of pizza places. We can bring in pizza places. And let's capitalize on something we have.
Alright.
So would the other council members mind if I do some in, inquiring about anybody wanting to sponsor something like that?
Go for it.
Alright, yeah, I wasn't saying we plan it.
As, as long as it doesn't bring me any additional responsibility, I'm all for it.
I can't promise that. I'll get you free pizza.
There you go.
Alright, moving into new business for the evening. Uh, first is the bond release for Greenbrier Meadows Phase Five and Greenbrier Meadows Phase Three.
Okay, uh, let me, first I want to say that these should be separate. Phase Five and Phase Three are different developers. And with that, the developer of Phase Three is uh, um, tabling his request, uh, probably take it off the agenda for a few months. There's still some work that needs done on that so that you can forget about for tonight, next month or so.
While we're here, Kevin. So at the petitioner's request, is there a motion to table the release of the bond for Greenbrier Meadows Phase Three?
I didn't request that.
It's on our agenda, however. So again.
I did. I didn't, I'm the petitioner. I didn't want to be tabled. I was wanting, I was wanting both subdivisions to be heard.
That, uh, that, well, Phase Three was Phil Tapp subdivision. Those should have been separate line items.
Okay, well, I have two plats, so.
Right, yours, yours is all under, I have that all under Phase Five, or we'll do that next.
Okay.
So again, back to council, is there a motion to table the request for Phase Three Greenbrier Meadows?
So moved.
Second.
Sanders, a motion of second. We're ready.
Got Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Camilla Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, let's move on to Phase Five, Kevin.
Okay, uh, in Phase Five, uh, the developer is here at the meeting and I'll let him go into what he is requesting. Uh, I sent you, sent the council an email about this earlier today. Uh, there's a portion of that, uh, the right of way in Phase Five that is not completed as of now. So um, I will let him explain more, the developer, more about his request.
Am I good to talk now?
After you introduce yourself, yes.
I, I'm not Betsy Smith. I'm Chris Smith. I'm on my wife's computer. I'm the developer of Greenbrier Meadows Phase Five, Section One and Section Three. My first request is for the acceptance of Section, of Phase Five, Section Three, which is reached a hundred percent build out. Um, this plat included two streets, Harrison Court and a portion of Benjamin. And then my second request is for Phase Five, Section One, but I, I don't know if you want to do them one at a time or what?
With your pleasure, Kevin.
They're all under the same letter of credit, so I don't know how, if we can, I mean, that's up to the council if they, you'd like to release part or accept right of way and one section of that. They are, they are separate plats.
Let's do them separately just for ease.
Okay.
So Kevin, do you have any thoughts on the release of this line of credit? Or, I'm sorry, bond?
I'm trying to think back if there are any concerns. I know most of the work being done was in Section One. I don't think there was anything, I honestly can't remember off the, I have, if there's anything remaining in Section Three because it's been a month since I looked at that portion of it. I didn't know we were going to look at them separately.
Okay. So do you want to continue with this tonight or do you need time to review your documents?
Here's, can I make a suggestion?
Please.
If they're all covered by the same letter of credit, um, I guess I have concerns about releasing part of part of it or approving something in one phase and not the other. I don't know how you, maybe I'm missing something, but I don't know how you separate that out from a letter of credit. Um, if they're all covered by the same letter. It's, so.
In other words.
The, the, the current letter of credit is mainly for the, a little bit of sidewalk, street trees and then stuff that is now done in, in Section One. I'm not sure there's anything that was on that letter of credit that covered this phase. Um, I, and I just submitted that letter of credit about a month ago. It's good for a year. It's a, in excess of thirty three thousand dollars and the remaining work out there in Section One is probably less than ten. So from a bonding or a letter of credit standpoint, you're covered three or four times over, um, and Harrison and Benjamin are complete. And I, no one explained to me when I had separate plats that if I combined the letter of credit, that it would all be tied together. I might be happy to do a new letter of credit just specifying this next phase. And I'm really, I didn't know you had to release the bond. All I'm looking for is you to take over the roads. I don't know the language for that.
Kevin, can you go here?
Uh, as part of the roads, if we take in the roads, we have to take an entire right of way. And since the sidewalks, street trees that are a part of that right of way and they're not finished, that's, that's my concern with that portion of it.
Well, in section, in, in Phase, Section Three, all infrastructure is complete. All houses are complete. It's a hundred percent built out. Um, all street trees are in. Um, and I was here to talk about Section One because of Deer Run. It was recently explained to me that, um, because the plat includes Lucy Lane and Lucy Lane was not complete, that you couldn't split up the plat and you had to take all streets on the plat. And uh, I want to talk about that because Deer Run's kind of a thoroughfare and everybody pushed me to open and I did. And now I'm responsible for it. It's done, but a little sidewalk. Um, and you're holding a thirty thousand dollar letter of credit of mine that I pay for every year. So I really want to keep these separate. I really like to have you guys accept Harrison and Benjamin. And I like to have a discussion on what we can do about Deer Run because it's a pretty serious street. I mean, it's complete except for a little bit of sidewalk and I was hoping to get that accepted also.
When are you planning to complete the sidewalk?
We're doing it as we speak. It's weather dependent now because of winter.
So do you think by our next meeting, you would have it done?
In a week?
Two weeks?
Uh, I, not in December. I don't know if that could, I don't know if that's possible. We have gotten about halfway down Deer Run on the east side. And then the west side, we have on Lucy Lane, we have uh, six lots, four houses under construction. Uh, two sold with sidewalk and then two vacant lots that haven't started yet. And on Deer Run, we still have um, a corner lot on Lucy, which would require sidewalk and then two other unbuilt lots yet. And so, um, one of the confusions I have is when I was first talking to planning three years before, I was told that it was an eighty percent build out rule to dedicate the streets because I was worried about that. I don't want to have to maintain them for a long, long time. And then just recently I was told, no, 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 it has to be a hundred percent built out. Um, so that was, caused a little bit of frustration. That's one reason I wanted to come talk to the town council. Um, especially regarding Deer Run because it is, it's become a thoroughfare. There's buses, there's trash trucks, there's city vehicles. There's other construction vehicles going to other subdivisions that I'm not a part of. And they're going to tear the road up over time and, um, I just don't want to be liable for that considering we worked hard to get it done and put in huge street trees and really made the street look good. But I'm, I'm, I'm digressing. I'd really like to start with the one and then have a discussion about the other. I, I kind of thought the, I was told the plats had to be separated, so I'd really like to see the, the Harrison and the Benjamin turned over and then we discuss Deer Run, because you're still holding my letter of credit. I didn't think you had to release the letter of credit to accept the streets. I didn't know that. I thought sometimes those carried over.
Darla, what's your thoughts here? I mean, I could see his point on Deer Run and it is, it is something particularly during this time of year that we need to make sure we facilitate the best we can. By the way, it's cared for because it has become a major route in and out of certain subdivisions and for the buses.
I agree, I would agree with Mr. Smith that, um, the letter of credit doesn't have to be released in order for the town to approve the streets or accept the rights away. I guess I'm still a little bit confused though about, you know, if all of these or both of these subdivisions are covered by the same letter of credit. I'm, I'm concerned about the best way to handle that. If Mr. Smith wants to go get another letter of credit to cover the last ten thousand dollars worth of work, I think that's fine. Um.
Well, I think all I have to do is rename it, right? And rename it just Greenbrier, Phase Five, Section One. Cause it, right now I think it covers, it just says both names.
I think that's fine if you're, the bank or whoever you're working with will do that.
Well, I mean, thirty three thousand dollars, I would tell you it's in your best interest just to keep it at that. And then if there's some. And then if there's something goes on there you don't like, you're holding my letter of credit if I haven't finished it. I'm asking, I've already paid for it, so reducing it doesn't do me any good.
Okay, then I, whatever the council's pleasure is.
Thoughts from council?
So I'm confused. What is it that? You're wanting then, are you wanting? You, you're saying keep the letter of credit and? Get rid of the bond or?
There's no bond. It's a letter of credit in lieu of bond. I posted a letter of credit instead of bond.
Okay.
You can do either or. And it's the IU credit and they're holding, they gave you the letter of credit.
And everything on the letter of credit that is supposed to be covered has not yet been complete, correct?
Right, uh, a majority of it has, because I did it right after I gave it to Kevin.
Okay.
Because I was hoping to get this meeting, and then as I was being told what I had to do, I kept doing more and more and more. But the letter had already been issued, so there's not a lot left. There's some sidewalk is basically, and a couple, you know, some street trees on Lucy. But everything else went in, the street trees on Harrison are in, the street trees on Benjamin are in, sidewalks are, it's, it's all, it's all there. And actually, every house, I mean, I don't own any of them anymore. Every house in Harrison, every house in Benjamin sold and occupied. I don't even have any. Ownership of it at this point.
So I'm kind of with Dan, a little confused about what the end goal is here tonight. If we're keeping the letter at thirty thousand dollars, are you wanting us to just accept the street or?
Yes.
Where's that go?
I don't want to be filling potholes next year.
Okay, so that makes more sense than trying to.
I want to turn the streets over to you for maintenance. Yep.
For Deer Run is what we're looking at right now.
For Harrison, for Benjamin and Deer Run, I will hold on to Lucy because, um. It, it, there is, there are eight lots there, the house is under construction. We're going in and out of there. I did surface pave it thinking you'd take it, and then I was told differently after that, so. Um, the pavement's done, the street tree's not in, and not all the sidewalks in on Lucy. But we also have some major construction going on there, so I wasn't going to be so bold as to ask for that.
So on Benjamin and the other streets, Deer Run, everything is complete.
Except for some sidewalk on Deer Run, because we have lots that aren't built yet.
Darla, is there any way to take the street alone and not the rights away?
I think you can.
Kevin, how do you feel about that?
I, I was not aware that that was something we could do, but if we can, then I, I know Kip has. Looked at the streets out there and I think everything is fine.
Kip, you want to weigh in here?
Yeah, me and Jay, we drove the, all the areas that were talked about in question and all the curbs and street are, are, are accepted.
Okay, so would, do you have any problems taking the streets alone? And leaving the rights away still in his hand? For him to complete everything else?
Uh, well, I mean, the, you already got the taxpayers out there. We're going to go ahead and. Snowplow this winter and all that. It's just what he's saying is, you know, if a pothole develops. This is going to be out of the town's pocket versus his pockets, what I understand.
Right.
So, uh, I. I don't know. I, I really can't answer that. I mean, I don't. I mean, the sidewalks and the street trees is not kind of under my, I don't know if that's under my jurisdiction or more Kevin's.
Uh, well, he, here's kind of the overall deal for everybody to understand, so the public understands. I, I can empathize with the developer wanting us to take the streets, particularly if they're done, in particular if some confusion. However, we have been burned by developers in the past where we start releasing things and then. There are tens of thousands or more dollars of things left undone that never get done because we release them. So I'm trying to find the happy median here toward recognizing that. We want Deer Run and the other streets to come into the town so that we can properly care for them and maintenance them as necessary. But I also don't want to be releasing a bond that requires you to finish out as necessary. Um, because again, I hope not, but if your company goes out of business, we have nothing to go back against at that point. So that's kind of where I'm at. I don't have a problem taking the streets if the rest of the council's good with that, but I want to leave everything else in effect until it's done.
Can we, can we split this up and say you'll take the right of ways on Harrison and Benjamin? And then you'll take the, I'll say the responsibility of street maintenance on Deer Run?
I don't know that we're, we don't really want to get in a position of splitting hairs here, sir. I mean, if you want us to take the streets, we can do that. Otherwise, we can just leave it. Well, the answer is no, we're not doing that. I mean, and I don't mean to be cruel about it, but i- i- if we're leaving a thirty thousand dollar bond in place, what's the difference?
Me maintaining the streets. I just know that Lucy and Benjamin are done. I thought you guys would want them.
Well, again, that's what I'm saying. We'll take the streets, just not the rights away with everything else.
Okay.
On Lucy and Benjamin, are the right of ways are complete too, correct?
Yep. All the.
Lucy, you just said Lucy.
Harrison, Benjamin, Harrison are, yeah, are Section Three. Yeah.
I have no issue with that in those areas, but the ones that are not complete, I have an issue taking.
I agree with you. I don't disagree with that.
Um, and Kevin, you're a hundred percent sure that everything is complete on those two streets?
It was almost complete when I looked at it a month or so ago, and I haven't looked at it since then. So if he says it's done, then I will take his word for it.
You know, kind of my suggestion is to table this to the next meeting so everyone can double check everything. Does, do you have a problem with waiting two weeks?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what?
I don't think it matters at this point, no. I don't, like, two weeks is fine. And if you want me to split the bonds out again, I could probably pull that off in two weeks. That makes your life easier.
Are we, are we going to, um, have we picked up leaves on these streets and do we plan to plow them when it snows?
We've already been plowing them. We plowed them last winter. Uh, as far as leaves, there's not really much trees out there that's buried a lot of leaves this year, so. Uh, but we've already plowed them. I mean, it's not fair for the people that's in these houses, even though they're not ours, not our, totally our streets yet, but. For them to have to try to maneuver through the snow, so.
So what does it mean for us to accept the streets?
What it does is, is it, if, like Mr. Smith said, if a pothole develops in here, it's not his responsibility to fix that street. It's going to be. The town's street department to repair the street. It's general maintenance of, of repair work.
No, it quite frankly goes well beyond that because right now it's a private road. It's not a city street.
Exactly.
So laws and ordinances do not attach to something that's not in the inventory of the city or the town in this case.
If you, anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, uh. I mean, I don't know technically if we really have to do the snow removal. I mean, because we've not accepted the street in. We're just doing it out of the. Respect for the new homeowner that's already living there.
And we kind of had understanding about that. You guys said you'd do it because if not, why would I leave the road open for damage? I could block the road off at the north, at the north end of it and say, local traffic only, and put up signage. And keep all that traffic off of it. I'm not saying I'm going to do that because nobody wants that, but when we had this discussion three years ago, they kind of made it clear, we know, we'll kind of work together. We want that road open.
Well, that's why we're trying to find a reason to do this or the ability to do this. You know, that's exactly what we're all trying to accomplish here is.
Yeah.
To get the end result of what you want. It's just very complicated to get there at this point. So.
I'm getting back to my earlier comments. Since everything's covered by the same letter of credit. I would just suggest that you table it for two weeks out and. I'm sure we can talk to Mr. Smith in the interim about. Splitting it off and, um, getting a smaller letter of credit or something between now and December twenty-seventh.
Can we send somebody out to verify? Everything's been done that way. Everyone feels good about it. Everybody signs off on it, and then we can look at it in two weeks and hopefully do the best we can.
Yeah, I can go out and check the right of ways on Benjamin and Harrison, verify all that's been taken care of.
And I can meet with Kevin and we can kind of go over everything again.
Perfect. Okay. So that said, from council, is there questions or is there a motion potentially to table?
Um, I think we beat it to death. I think we're ready to table it. And I'll make the motion to table, I'm trying to find it here, um. Table the bond release for Greenbrier Meadows Phase Five. And Greenbrier Meadows Phase Three.
We already did Phase Three.
Oh, okay, so we're just tabling Phase Five?
Yes.
Okay, so that's my motion.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, Sandy, please.
Got Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor's, uh, Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next on the agenda is request for a waiver of fee for extension of the building permit for Governor's Park by Allied Argenta LLC.
All right, uh, put it briefly, the way our building code is written, building permits. Uh, last for one year, at which point they expire. And upon that one year mark. They can be renewed, but it's the permit fee for renewal is fifty percent of the original permit cost. And the applicant or the, uh, petitioner, I guess, in this case, is asking for that fee to be waived.
How much are we talking, Kevin?
It is, I want to say around eight or nine thousand dollars.
That's half or that's the whole?
Yes, that's half. The original permit, I think, was eighteen, actually I have it in front of me. Yeah, it was eighteen thousand, three hundred.
And is there a reason why he's wanting this waived? I mean, besides the obvious?
I would have to let them speak to, as to why.
Hi, Mr. Swafford. This is Hayden Lockhart with Allied. Um, so we were one of the early, one, one, one of the first of the commercial. Um, building plans that was approved through the newly established, um, Ellisville Building Department. And when we actually brought this up initially, we, we had presented a schedule that showed we were at least fifteen months of construction. And, uh, we were told that it would be, you know, no problem to extend it, just let them know. Um, and we were not made aware of any fees or anything to be associated with that. So, you know, our, and it, we're a little bit different because we only do low income housing. So when our, when our project gets approved and funded, we don't have the normal, you know, al- alternatives to go back for additional funding for various things, et cetera, et cetera. So, I mean, you know, we're, we're sort of looking at it like, you know, for us to, to pay that fee now, which is, you know, unexpected and, you know, I don't know if the, if, if. That was even in place at the time because it certainly wasn't explained to us and we didn't have anything, uh, to read that told us that that might be the case, et cetera, et cetera. So we just sort of feel like it was, it wasn't disclosed, wasn't expected. And unfortunately, when you build low income housing, we're, we're stuck with tax credits and, and, you know, financing that we get in place right of closing. Uh, we don't have the same kind of, you know, ability to be able to go change things while construction is moving forward.
Kevin, is the construction moving forward?
Yeah, it's moving right along. It's just a large project, so it takes some time to complete.
Um, is it correct what he said that he wasn't aware of any kind of fee?
Well, let me, let me put it here real quick. Uh, for Mr. Lockhart, were, were you not represented by council when you came and asked for the tax? Abatements and tax credits? That would have gone through the ord, local ordinances and everything else? It's time?
Yes, we were.
Okay, so. There's, shouldn't have been any advisement on our part. I would think that your council would have gone carefully through everything to make sure that you were in compliance.
Well, this was just building permit fees.
I, I.
Nothing to do with tax abatement, et cetera. And, and so. Yeah, so the, and that, I don't even know if the ordinance was written at that time, was it?
Uh, the fee schedule would have been in place before we took any building permits.
Good evening, um, this is Yvonne from Allied Argenta. Uh, just to piggyback on that, um, I think. So when the ordinances, when we went before council to discuss the tax abatement. Uh, at that time, we had already gotten the tax credits, but, um. When we approached on getting the building permits, as Hayden mentioned earlier. There was, it was still in process, and when we came to the department at that time. We were not aware that, we were just told that the process would be to just inform them of when they would need to get renewed. But there was no indication of what the fee would be, at least not from our records and, and quite frankly. Um, we had budgeted every penny. I know this may not be of concern, but I also wanted to add because you asked, why are we approaching? The, the town council to consider a waiver? And it's because we have struggled, just like all the changes that you guys have seen in construction and in development. This project has been a real challenge to bring to fruition from when we got the tax credits and all the ordinances and even. The permits, we have encountered over two point four million dollars in increased costs. And, and so right now, we've been working with the contractor and subs just to, to contain the costs. And, um, so we wanted to come before you for your consideration in. In waiving the fee, considering one, that we weren't aware of it, two, that the budget is very, very thin as it is. We, the project has been moving forward despite these construction increases and it's due to be completed. Uh, by the end of March, if not the beginning of April. Um, and as Hartman, as Hayden mentioned, we. It's ninety units of affordable housing in the town of Ellisville, so. We appreciate your considerations. If there are any questions, we're happy to answer and. And obviously abide by everything that the building department provides. We're really grateful for all of their guidance and support. As well as yours throughout this entire process of the project, but, um, definitely the nine thousand. Dollar fee was not something that we were expecting.
Ron, you had your hand up.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to state that, um, as the building inspector, we've been down there several times and they've been moving along quite, uh. Quite hard at, uh, trying to get this completed. However, as you all know of COVID. Uh, throughout all the contractors in Bloomington and Monroe County and Ellisville, they are having an extremely hard time getting, um, product. In, and this is the same case. It's what's happening there. That's all.
Thank you. Other council comments, questions? Okay.
Seeing. Um, sorry, I was just thinking about it. My original question was to Kevin. Kevin, can you answer that?
I'm sorry, what was your question?
Um, that. There was language that they knew that. There would be another. Fee if this wasn't completed at a certain time.
Yeah, I mean, the fee schedule was in place. Well, before we issued any permits.
And that.
And that part has not changed.
Okay, that was my question.
Kevin, when's the building permit that they currently have run out?
It expired. I believe.
November twelfth.
November twelfth.
So they currently do not have a building permit, correct?
Correct.
And is construction continuing where they don't have a building permit?
Hey Scott, this is Denise and I did let them go ahead and continue with construction until we got the waiver resolved one way or the other.
All right, thank you. Other questions from the council or action from the council?
Can I say one more thing real quick?
Sure.
Not to, not to press it too much, and I, I do respect everybody's, you know, opinion here, and I understand that the ordinances are there for a reason, et cetera. But we, you know, we brought in about forty-one million dollars into Ellisville over two projects, uh, that are both currently going right now. Um, and, you know, even though it sounds like from that side, it's a ton of money. The flip side is it's all affordable housing. Uh, between the Richland Project and the Governor Park Project. And, uh, you know, so it, it sounds like a ton of money, but real, you realize that a lot of that money goes for, you know, bond issuances. It goes for all kinds of other things. And these projects, you know, when. And these projects, you know, when we're, when we're successful and, and, and we put them into operation, they're, you know, frankly, their return on investment is only possible because of tax credit subsidies, um, and, you know, trying to control costs.
Anyone else have questions or comments, or is this council ready for a motion?
I actually have a question for Kevin. Kevin, do you remember any conversations with them? And where this was discussed or, you know, asked, is there recollection, how's your recollection compared to what they've said?
I do not know, but they've spoken with myself quite a bit, they've spoken with Denise quite a bit, and we had a previous building inspector at that time who said God only knows what, so I, I, I can't say one way or another, all I know is, as I answered Dan, that, that fifty percent renewal fee's been in place since we started the department.
Thanks.
Anyone else have any questions? Is there a motion from council concerning this?
I actually will make a motion to waive the fees for, uh, how, but not for another year, I mean, it's Governor's Park has brought a lot into us, and I think that, uh, I know they're running on a tight budget. And we don't know what was said. I do understand this, you know, with council, they should have looked at codes, but, um, that may have been the deal breaker of getting even building here, and as Rhonda said, they're having supply chain issues like most of us are, and I don't want to hold them, uh, I don't want to add to their costs, because the supply chain costs I'm sure are going up, so I'll make a motion to waive the fees.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion so we can have the vote. Sandy, when you're ready.
Scott Oldham?
I'm gonna vote yes to waive it, but I, upfront, I don't like it. Mr. Lockhart, your insinuation that we should give you this so you continue to build in Ellisville is not well received. I took that more as a threat than anything else. But since our planning department apparently didn't have everything in line appropriately, then yes, I'll go for the waiver of the fee.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
No.
Pam Samples?
No.
We're coming to you Sandy.
I vote yes to waive the fee. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, um, we greatly appreciate it. And, um, if, if I may just have a few minutes, I did want to apologize for the previous comment. Mr. Chair, that is no intention at all. And I speak as the lead of this project and will tell you that we are wholeheartedly appreciative of everything that you guys have done for this project and for the town of Ellisville. And, and Kevin and Denise have been very, very helpful and supportive, and I know that you guys appreciate the affordable housing that's coming in, so I, I did not want to leave this meeting without reiterating that and for you to know that this comes from, from the heart and from, from, from the whole team, so thank you.
Well, somehow I kind of doubt that it comes from the whole team, but I do appreciate your putting voice to it, and, um, we'll move on from there. Moving on.
Could I ask one question? If this was, if this was said, I missed it, how much is the fee to renew the permit?
Nine thousand.
Nine thousand, thank you.
Moving on, the police department required to hire two full-time police officers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two proposals for you tonight, I talked to Mosley about it, I wasn't able to get ahold of Mr. Swafford. I have two policemen I want to, um, hire, one, hire in full-time, the first one is Richard Hall. He is a, now employed by IU Police Department, uh, he has been employed by Capitol Police and IMPD for, for several years, but he started here as a reserve and wants to return here, so he lives in Monroe County and we should have no problem with his residency at all, so that would be my first request.
Okay, do you want to have the second one?
Well, it's, it's a different proposal, so you want to go with this?
So he's working for IU currently?
Yes, he is, uh-huh.
Okay, and he worked for Indianapolis Metropolitan at one point?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm sorry, you said someplace else?
Capitol Police Department, yeah, where, where he actually started his career. Actually, he was reserved here, I should say first.
Okay, and this will be going for a full-time slot, right? Has he been to the academy?
He's been to the academy, we're probably talking two to three weeks, uh, transition time, and we'll have him on, we'll have him on street.
Okay, motions or questions from council?
Jimmy, real quick question, um, this is a budgeted position, correct?
Oh yeah, that's it, we're replacing the, yeah.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I didn't get ahold of you today.
Motion from council or questions?
If, if you'll give me the, uh, person's name one more time, I'll make the motion.
Richard Hall, Richard Hall.
Richard Hall, I make a motion, we hire Richard Hall as a full-time police officer.
Second.
Motion a second Sandy please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, I appreciate that, my second request is to move the status of, of John Newcomer from reserve to full-time, uh, marshal. He's a long time, uh, associate here with the reserve unit, that's something he's wanted to do for a lifetime, he is, uh, uh, taken a lot of, uh, thought to this, and, uh, he is requesting that we hire him full-time.
Questions from council? Motion from council?
I make a motion, we move John Newcomer from part-time to full-time police officer.
Let's go back a minute, because it's a little appropriate, right now, he's not a full-time.
Right now, I want to move him to full-time.
I'm sorry, from reserved to full-time.
Thank you.
A second.
Sandy, have a motion second, we're ready.
Oh, well, Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And thank you so much, appreciate it.
Now down to the fire department, request to hire three part-time firefighters.
Good evening, uh, we've had a couple of part-time people leave, uh, two out of the three shifts at the fire department that rely on part-time staffing are short, and we've interviewed, uh, three individuals, we'd like to submit your, their names to you for approval. That names, those names are Logan Burpo, David Pemberton, and Clayton, sorry, forgot the last name here. Clayton Young, and pending the, uh, medical examinations for part-time, these are budgeted positions, they are not new.
Could you repeat the names again, please, I'm sorry, Logan?
Hang on. Logan Burpo, David Pemberton, Clayton, Clayton Young.
Okay.
Okay, questions or motions from council?
I'll have to get the names of those people again, I didn't catch all of them.
You want me to make the motion, I've got him here.
Yeah, he was, since you've got him all.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we, um, hire the following people, Logan Burpo, David Pemberton, and Clayton Young as part-time fire, fireman, I almost said police officer, but a fireman.
A second.
Motion second Sandy, when you're ready.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a request from the Republican Party to use the town hall for a caucus on December eighteenth at eleven AM.
I'm gonna take that one.
Sure.
Basically, uh, as of the seventeenth, um, it's my last day as chairman, I'm stepping down, and so we have to have a caucus uh, to replace me, and that's what we need to, we'd like to use the town hall for.
Okay, any questions? I take it the town hall's available at this, Sandy?
Um, I think so, yes.
I do have a question for Darla, um, this does not, this is okay to do, correct?
I think it's fine, as long as you would offer the Democratic Party the same opportunity if they wanted to.
That is a Saturday, so there'll be no one at town hall, we'll have to pre-arrange with William to get in and out.
Not a problem.
William can do that though, correct?
Yes, if they let me, Dan, I don't think, I don't think any, I, I think that, uh, I, I wouldn't think that this would just, this is not a rally or anything, it's a, it's a govern, it's quasi-governmental function, so I think in our town policy, we allow that with approval.
Okay, I was just concerned several years ago, uh, we had a problem with someone using the, um, the police station for a, a political function, and I know it was a big no-no, so that's the only reason I brought it up.
Yeah, we can't have a campaign rally or a, um, a political function, but I think this is a little bit different of caucuses. I, I, what was the term I'm looking for Darla, it's more of administrative type?
Yes, I really don't see a problem with it, I mean, the town hall is used by different organizations for their meetings, so and like I said, as long as the Democrats would get equal time, no problem.
So are there further questions from council, or is there a motion?
Um, I'll move that we, uh, allow the Republican Party to use the town hall on Saturday, what, is it this Saturday?
Yes, a week, yeah.
Yes, the eighteenth.
Saturday, December eighteenth, twenty twenty-one.
One second. When you're ready Sandy.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
I'll abstain.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is scheduling a work session for January.
I'll take this, um, yeah, uh, I think last meeting, we talked about scheduling a work session. It would be the third Monday in January, uh, that's a national holiday, so I would suggest that we do it on a Tuesday, the eighteenth. And, uh, we would be talking about usage, uses of the ARPA money. And, uh, I think I talked to one of the board members, I, I think it was William, that wanted to at least, uh, brush over talking about changes in the zoning ordinances. So those would be the two main topics with ARPA leading the way. Which is American Relief Plan Act money. What's your pleasure?
What time are you thinking, six, six-thirty, or what?
Well, I'd like to have it during the day, but, yeah, six or six-thirty, whatever's convenient for the board.
I think the earlier the better, so I'd like to see six.
If Scott and everybody can make it six, it'd be great for me, the earlier the better too.
Uh, probably coming in under the radar, but might as well start without me, so yeah.
Okay, I'll be sending out some information about proposed uses of the ARPA money and, uh, comment on Baker Tilly and what they think of our plan, and then that can start some question answers back and forth, uh, prior to the workstation, so we'll be prepared.
Darla, you don't see a need for a vote on this, do you? Okay.
No.
All right. Moving down now to privilege of the floor, anyone having business for the council that is not part of our normal agenda, or was not part of our normal agenda or discussion this evening?
This is Denise, I do Scott. I just wanted to let her, everybody know that the Lions Club planted fifteen trees on their heritage trail. The trees are planted, if I can get this right, at the eastern end of the south side of the trail to shade, um, walkers on the trail. The trees were, um, Coussa Dogwoods, and, um, street department dug the holes for the trees, and then the Lions Club did the rest, they had a grant for the trees, and, um, so they're probably about four or five foot tall trees they planted, and that's all I wanted to let everybody know.
Thank you, anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move now to supervisor comments, beginning with the town manager.
Yeah, briefly, uh, I'd just like to thank Main Street for, uh, sales, or Santa on Sales Street. Uh, I was pretty busy with the storm and all, but I did check in, and I, I think it was well attended and talked to a couple of people that really had fun down there, so sure appreciate, uh, having an event like that for Ellisville and their kids and the grownups, thanks.
Hey Mike, real quick question, um, what kind of storm damage did we have?
Uh, not a lot, I mean, there was trees down everywhere, we had a lot of emergency line locates. Couple crew members worked on those for Duke, because they had some poles down, uh, knocked out the power out on Thomas Road, we, one of our tanks overflowed, it was just stuff like that, it was busy work, but with the wind constantly blowing, kept us pretty busy, and then we had, luckily, we had crews, uh, in town helping with, uh, starting up and, and, and finishing out the sale street on Santa, uh, we was blocked from getting into, uh, the sewage plant, so we had to walk in during the storm to make some adjustments, and then that got all cleaned up this morning, so wasn't too bad, but it was quite the storm.
Yeah, thank you.
Other supervisor comments?
I have nothing.
Thank you for your support on the P D M board, I appreciate it.
Chief Foreman?
I'm good, thank you.
Kevin?
I don't have anything.
Sandy? Moving now to council comments.
I'd just like to thank everyone who did participate in the, uh, Santa on Sales Street and the storm cleanup, I know everyone, um, was very busy and did a great job as usual.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I want to take a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second Sandy? You're muted Sandy.
It's a good way.
Who made the motion, I'm sorry?
Me.
And who seconded?
I'm seconded.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carried, meeting adjourned at eight forty PM.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.